...nail box, because I used to do it when I was working, I got a lot of nail. I put it right on the front also, so it's one here and there's one closer to them, more like you're in car, car level, so.
Hey. Right on time.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Glassboro zoning board adjustments regular business meeting, June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Terry, can you read the opening statement, please?
Pursuant to the Open Publics Meeting Act, I hereby announce that adequate notice of this meeting, as required by said act, has been provided by adopting a schedule of regular monthly meetings for the year two thousand and twenty-two. Which schedule was posted on the borough hall bulletin board, mounted in south chairs and newspapers, and filed with the borough clerk.
All right, could I, uh, please rise in salute to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Mooning.
Here.
Ms. Camiola.
Here.
Mr. Harvey.
Present.
Mr. Jimenez is excused. Mr. Santor.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Perner.
Here.
Mr. Casabun.
Here.
Mr. Sullivan.
Here.
Okay. Mr. Ellis, could you swear in our professionals, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I'll ask each of you to rise and each of you to raise your right hand. We've got Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Casabun. Do each of you swear affirm testimony about to give us true and correct to best your knowledge, information, and belief in each application tonight?
Yes.
That's two yeses, Mr. Chairman. Take it away.
All right, everybody has a copy of the minutes. Anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns?
I will move with a correction. Mr. Jimenez was present twice on this. He only has to be present once. He was listed as here and then to another line down, so we just need to cross him out on line.
Do we know it?
Not a big thing.
All right, do we have motion to approve the minutes with the correction?
Motion to, uh, to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. All right, we have the bills. Does everybody have a chance to take a look at the bills? All right, do you have a motion to pay the bills?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. Any incoming and outgoing correspondence?
Not at this time.
Okay. Let's, uh, okay, we're gonna open it up to the public for non-agenda items only. Do you have a motion to open the public portion of non-agenda?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anybody from the public that has anything they would like to say that has nothing to do with what's on our agenda for this evening? Can you come forward, please? Right there at the microphone. Can you state your name and your address for the record?
And that has three twelve Oakwood Avenue, Glassboro.
Okay, Ms. Hess.
My problem is I'm making a formal complaint about my neighbor across the street at three twenty-seven Oakwood. This is the second time I've made a complaint regarding this neighbor. My first complaint was to the code department. And then I spoke with Danielle Spence, and then I also spoke with Diane Camiola. And the problem, uh, resolved itself for a few weeks. Now it's back again. The problem is that my neighbor across the street has a black tar mixer that he stores in the driveway. He's conducting a business out of his driveway.
Okay.
So I'm here for a resolution.
Okay, that type of complaint is normally for mayor and council.
For what?
Mayor and council.
So I'm shooting and being here?
No, ma'am, it's always good to see members of the public, right, Mr. Chairman? And, no, and it's, it's good that you come to express your, your concerns about your neighbor.
I, I agree, but that is something that mayor and council would have to take care of.
Well, I spoke to the councilwoman. She never got back to me.
Have you, you been to a council meeting?
No, I have not.
So, Mr. Chairman, may I, may I offer a little bit of an opinion?
Of course.
So what, what you're basically complaining of is someone who's performing an action that's not permitted in that zone.
Exactly.
If, you know, I understand you and you're correct, he's perhaps using that to conduct some sort of asphalt paving business or, or what have you, related business. So that would really be for your code enforcement officer. So each town or borough, depending, has someone who enforces the code of that various borough or town. And if that's not permitted in that zone, they can go and, yeah, they'll first talk to the person.
But I already went that route.
And then cite them. So that's code enforcement. Now you also, as a citizen, have a right. If the code enforcement officer's not acting as, um, quickly or sufficiently to suit you, then you also have a right to file charges, if you so desire, in municipal court. Um, you might wanna consult an attorney, just because people say, well, gee, John, you know, you always say that, that's just 'cause you're a lawyer. Well, not really, because generally that's something that will assist the individual. If they're not trained as an attorney, that will help them kinda navigate exactly what's going on. So it looks like it's something that is, is really troubling you, 'cause you, you took the time to come here tonight and share it with us. So I think those are your, your two options, at least for now.
But option number one wasn't corrected. I went to the code.
No, I get it. So that's why I said you might wanna talk to an attorney and talk about other options.
I'm also concerned of my safety. These people are not residents, they're owners.
Well, I'm not quarreling with you, ma'am. I'm, I'm, I'm giving you an amen, saying that if you wanna, you know, make sure that something gets addressed, sometimes you have to be in the middle of it, and, and, and there's a couple of ways to do it.
Well, I'm not willing to go the route of the court, court proceedings.
The borough council meeting, she can speak before that?
Well, you can go to borough and council, but, but really all they would do is refer to their code enforcement officer, 'cause that's kinda why you have a code enforcement officer.
Well, that's why I went to him first.
Oh, I understand that, and you were clear about that, and I do appreciate that. And that's why I said if you're not satisfied with the response, you may wanna consult council and then have a more focused or targeted approach. That's all.
Well, I'm, I'm concerned that the borough should also enforce the ordinances that are already in existence.
Be concerned and, and, and be advised that I fundamentally agree with you. But at the same time, you're asking me, how do I get traction? And I'm saying, it, it seems you haven't gotten the adequate satisfaction at this point, and that was what engendered my recommendation about, you know, talking to an attorney. It's up to you, ma'am. It's your, your, your decision.
Well, I'm not satisfied with that conclusion. I'm really not.
Well, you haven't talked to anybody yet.
Well, I did talk to the code department.
Well, no, 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 but you haven't. Well, I said, the code enforcement officer or talk to council. You haven't spoken to council yet, I presume.
No, I don't, I don't plan to go in that route.
Well, Catherine, that's personal decision. That's purely up to you.
I expect the town to, I expect the town to act on my behalf, and obviously they haven't.
I understand.
Ms. Hess. Ms. Hess.
They might have went to the first step, but they didn't follow through.
Okay.
If, can I speak, Mr. Chairman?
And that's why I expect a resolution from the borough.
Ms. Hess, I actually work in the code enforcement building next door, okay? We are closed tomorrow, but we are open on Monday. We open at eight thirty. You may call Mr. Clark Pierpont. He's the zoning officer. He's also department head of that building, and he can maybe step in.
Well, Diane already spoke to him, and he apparently went to the residence with a, some sort of a summons, and apparently they disregarded it because the, the machine is right back in the driveway again. It's there right now as we speak.
So, it's gone for a while. So, so we might not know that it's back again, because unfortunately we don't have the manpower to patrol every street every day. But if you could let us know on Monday, I will let Mr. Pierpont know that you will be calling, and maybe we can go out there and speak with them again and contact the landlord, and let them know that they can't have that business there on a residential street, okay?
So I'll, I'll call you on Monday?
We understand. I'm sorry?
Should I call you on the?
Absolutely, if you would like to.
You're Terry?
I am.
Okay.
Okay, eight eight one, eighty-one forty is the number.
Sure, I'll get you right then.
I don't have a business plan.
Oh, I have a, I have a pen in my bag.
We have a pen.
We have a pen.
We have a pen, Miss Hess.
We have a pen.
I must have left it on my desk.
Here, Ms. Hess, I wrote a down for you, hon.
Wait.
And I'll let, I'll speak to Mr. Pierpont prior to you calling me, so we'll have a game plan for you.
Okay, thank you, Terry.
Okay? Oh, you're welcome.
Is there anybody else from the public has any non-agenda items? All right, do I have a motion to close the public portion?
So, no, can we close, you ready to close the public portion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it.
All right. Mr. Chairman, Matt, before we get rolling? Yep. So, um, on tonight's agenda, there's an application, uh, ZB twenty-two dash oh one Restore NJ LLC. Three hundred William Dalton Drive, block four zero nine, lot fifteen point zero four. Is anybody here for that application? There appears not to be. That application is being adjourned at the applicant's request to the next meeting, which is July twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two, back here, this room, seven P M. No further notice will be given, so if you are interested in that application, you gotta return at that time and back here. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. All right, let's, uh, first one on the agenda, ZB twenty-two dash zero three, Joanne Bradley, twenty-one Euclid Avenue, block three ninety, lot two. It's an R one zone, looking for bulk variance to construct a twelve by eighteen, includes carport on side of existing garage with deck on the roof and with electric and plumbing in the structure.
Mr. Chairman, before we hear this one, ma'am, excuse myself a minute, sir.
Yes, you may.
And you, you're within two hundred feet?
Yes, we actually share a backyard set.
Oh, okay, great. All right, well, thank you.
So that's a little close. A little too close for comfort.
Oh, wait, there you go.
Can't get much closer than that.
Ms. Ellis, can you swear in the?
Oh, yes, please. If you raise your right hand, do you swear affirm testimony about to give us true and correct to best your knowledge, information, and belief?
I do.
All right, great, well, thank you.
All yours.
Okay. First of all, before I get started, I wanted to thank Ms. Van Farilla for her guidance in this process and keeping me on track. Okay, so what we would like to do, and I brought supporting documents, which you all have copies of in your packets. Um, the first one is, it's just a map of Glassboro showing our property, so you get a feel for what, what we're discussing. This is, um, Main Street, Euclid, down here is the high school, and over here is Pittman. So you get a feel, a sense of where things are.
So you wanna mark that A one?
Yes, I have, I have it marked one in all your, um, packets, okay?
Well, we're at a hearing tonight, so let's.
Okay, that would be A one, yes. All right, so let's go this with A two. This is a map, um, of, again, of the, um, that area showing the buildings. So you can see impact or not impact. So this is our property here. This is our current home. This is our current garage, and this is the area we plan, um, with your approval to put the addition on. A three is the large survey. This isolating the property. And then A four is a blow up of the specific area where this addition would be. And based on the survey, we have, uh, just enough room for that with the ten-foot setback. There is twenty-two point one from one corner and twenty-two point three, I think it is, from the other corner. So the twelve as the width with the twenty-eight length.
Well, I don't think you, you told the board yet what you're fixing to do.
Oh.
So it's kind of in the ether.
Okay. So the plan is to construct a garage, an addition to the current structure, because I had the fortune or misfortune of inheriting my brother's, uh, vintage Corvette when he passed. So we want to utilize that space for the restoration of that vehicle. My older son will take that project along. And then we wanna have a deck above. The current garage is thirty by thirty, which that is the current zoning. That's why I'm applying for a variance. That is no longer, uh, is a garage. The entire first floor is a weight room, gym, and the second floor is a martial arts space. When it was constructed, it was constructed as a garage with family entertainment space on the second floor in the nineties. Yes.
Are they businesses that are on there? I mean, just where they're, you're.
Oh, no, no. This is our private. Yeah, this is private, yes.
Your private, yes. Okay, thank you.
Um, I was a personal trainer in my early years, and health and wellness is important. My boys have always lifted weights. Uh, they got that from their father, also very important. And my older son is a martial artist, so the second floor of the current garage is his training facility for himself. What we wanna do then is have a de- deck above the garage where the Corvette would be restored, and the deck would be the yoga Pilates space. Does that explain what we wanna do with that?
So, your garage is really, it's there, isn't really a garage?
Correct. It does not function as a garage any longer, and it hasn't for about, I'd say, five or six years.
I'm so confused. Okay, now, the, the addition that you wanna put on.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you want it enclosed. Is that what you said in one of the papers, that it was an enclosed?
Yes, it'll be, it'll be a true, uh, garage.
Okay, 'cause you, you, you called it a carport, which isn't closed.
No, Mr. Pierpont made me aware that that is the wrong terminology.
Okay. So this is gonna be your third garage that isn't a garage?
Oh, no, this, this one will be. This one will be for the, the Corvette.
Just for.
Yeah, with the Corvette, yes. Currently, the Corvette is in the driveway under a tarp.
Okay.
What other questions may I?
Well, the only question is, the board does not permit water to be in garages, obviously. That's not, so you requested electric and water. Electric is typical, but not water.
Then we would, we would.
X, extending on the water.
Yeah, X, X out the water.
I got it.
Any other questions from the board? Well, let's reach out to our, um, professionals. Start with Mr. Sullivan, since it's his first night here.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate it. So my name is Gregory Sullivan, with Vermington Vermic Engineers. I'm a professional pla- uh, planner. I'm also a professional engineer, but in this case, acting as a professional planner for Mrs. Addison. She had prepared a letter, and based on the testimony of the applicant, we have a couple of questions. Um, there's a maximum height of twenty feet allowed in the zone. Um, and you've indicated in this testimony, you're proposing to construct a garage with a deck above it?
Correct.
Is that going to be an enclosed deck or an open deck?
It will be an open deck.
Open deck.
Mm-hmm.
And what would be the, would that height be less than twenty feet?
Yes, it would.
Fencing, so you've indicated that you are fencing the entire property.
Yes.
There's limitations on height of fencing. Um, maximum height is six feet, and fences higher than four feet are limited to rear lot line and portion of side lot line between the rear lot line.
Can, can you speak up a little bit, Mr. Sullivan?
Is this?
Some of us are old.
I apologize. Some, some of us are old. Um, so fencing, um, there's limitations on height of fencing. What is the proposal of your fencing?
Yes, um, whatever the code allows from the street back. I think it's fifteen feet for four feet height, and then beyond that, six feet.
Okay, so you will conform to the cause of, okay.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
Is that the difference between the front yard and the backyard?
Yes.
Yeah.
What does that miss, Camiola?
It's the difference between the front yard and the backyard. The front yard gets the four feet and the backyard gets the six.
Correct, right. So because the garage is behind the house, that's where it would be the six feet. There currently is on my neighbor's property, and I think in the pictures that I've included in your packets, you can see that there is some white fencing that my, uh, next-door neighbor put up at nineteen Euclid, too, because he has, um, Rowan students renting, and they were, when they were backing out of their parking space, they were coming onto my property, which has sewer running underneath. So we indicated that probably wasn't a good idea, so they can, they construct the fence. And we would actually continue that, because it's on the pa- the property line, we would continue that fence line towards the back of the property.
Okay, and then the, the variance, which is the subject of the application, um, thirty feet is, uh, the maximum width of the accessory building, and the applicant's requesting forty-two feet. Any questions of myself?
You tailed off. I didn't even hear what you said. What'd you say? No, I didn't.
Said the, the, the zone is thirty feet and.
Yeah, I'm honest. We're not, we're not just making it up.
They're requesting, what, forty-two feet?
Is that all?
Thirty's allowed.
Thirty, thirty feet is allowed and.
Maximum width.
Maximum width, and they're looking, looking for forty-two.
Forty-two.
The, the twelve-foot variance request.
Mr. Casabun.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'll run through my, my letter. The first, um, yeah, I'm not sure if this is actually functioning, um.
Yeah, it is. I can hear you.
Okay, um. Um. So I've just restated in comment number one what the variance request is, which we've heard a forty-two foot wide garage where thirty is, is, is what's, uh, permitted and what's existing now. I've just restated that. I did, uh, run into two, uh, what I believe are existing non-conforming conditions. The height of the existing garage is listed as twenty-one feet somewhere in, in the documents, as well as the size of the, the existing size of the driveway exceeds the maximum allowable of one thousand square feet. So we don't have an exact number on it. It wasn't provided, but maybe sixteen, eighteen hundred square feet is probably what's out there right now. But again, that's existing, um, non-conformity. I did ask to clarify the, um, setback from the side yard. Three-foot minimums required. I then found in the packet, it is noted as about, the minimum is ten feet, ta- actually ten point one feet is what's noted in the hand drawing, and that's consistent with what I saw from the survey. So it's about a ten-foot setback from the side yard where three feet is required. I did wanna ask, any building-mounted lighting for the new addition, are you planning? Any floodlights, anything like that on the outside?
Yes, we would plan on one floodlight. There currently on the existing garage, there's one exterior light, not a floodlight, it's just a, a switch.
Like a dome-type light?
Yes.
So you would put a floodlight in, you know, towards the middle or on the edge, or like, is it gonna be downward facing to the, um?
It would be downward facing, but angled towards the house.
Okay, I, if it's, if it's, if it's approximately garage door height, which is what they usually are, the spread wouldn't necessarily be too far, as long as it is like, as the applicant said, you know, downwards and towards, you know, in towards the yard. Um, and the, the architectural or one of the drawings had a side door, um, a person door around the side.
Yes.
Is there gonna be any sidewalk connecting that, or just open, opens up to the ground?
It would just open up to the ground.
Okay, that, that's easy enough. And, uh, I would just rec- any, any downspouts would be directed forward or backward as opposed to the side yard where your neighbor is. Um, and lastly, I just, uh, I, a grading, Glassboro does have a grading plan ordinance, um, for a project six hundred square feet and over. This project wouldn't exceed that, so it wouldn't, wouldn't apply. The grading plan ordinance. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions of the board? Do I have a motion to open it to the public?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So be it. Do I have a motion to close the public portion of the meeting?
Any motion to close the public meeting, sorry.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion, is that, uh, with the, taken into consideration, all the recommendations that we made by the engineers, that, that we take into consideration. Also with the fencing, we're gonna comply, longer to comply with the, uh, recommendation from the engineer, and that we approve the, um, the variance.
Minus the penalty.
Minus the penalty, that's good.
Minus the penalty.
I do have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Harvey.
Four.
Mr. Santor.
In favor.
Mr. Smith.
Four.
Ms. Camiola.
Four.
Mr. Mooning.
Four. Oh, got it.
Thank you very much.
And those, uh, those will be left with the language board secretary. They're your, our exhibits now.
Oh, be.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're in evidence.
She gets to storm now.
Right.
Do you want the photos, too? I know you have copies of all.
No, they weren't moved. Just what was moved.
Don't know if you gave us the exhibits.
Okay.
And you might wanna bring it up, because we're gonna have another application.
I will do that. Thank you.
I'm trying to back something out of the camera, yeah.
Next up on the agenda, ZB twenty-two dash zero four, Quam Investments, three nineteen North Main Street, lot two, lot nineteen, R three zone. Looking for a bulk variance to expand the driveway and widen to allow access to the new garage, which would exceed the maximum square footage of one thousand square feet.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, for the record, my name is Dale Taylor. I'm a licensed attorney in the state of New Jersey, with offices in Hickelton, New Jersey, and I represent the applicant here. It's nice to be back here. Hopefully I get a better outcome than this time holds here. Anyway, as chairman.
It's been a while, yeah.
What's that?
I said it. We haven't seen you in a while, so welcome back.
That is a reason for that. Anyway, uh, this is not my first rodeo, as they say, so, um, but thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, what we're looking at doing.
Where's it, where'd you go?
Can we wait for Mr. Perner?
Mr. Perner?
Is he out there?
Yes, he's here.
Just, what neighbors?
She went together.
Oh, we went together?
Yeah, they're neighbors.
Yeah, what they're gonna.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, yeah.
We're gonna delay our next.
Delay our next. I mean, I'm looking at these gorgeous pictures.
Hello?
You're the next contestant.
We're ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, um, and I have two witnesses tonight. Uh, I'd like to get them sworn in and then, uh, just do a, a general overview, uh, and then maybe go to completeness, and then get our professionals to testify, and then go to your professionals, if that's okay, every board's different.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Ellis, would you like to swear these, everybody?
First and foremost, we'll have the managing member of the applicant, uh, Mrs. Elizabeth Quam. Uh, she's the managing member of Quam Investments LLC, and she will be testifying as a fact witness. And then we have, uh, Gregory Simons. He is a professional engineer in the state of New Jersey, and he will be our expert, uh, engineer on those matters. Have you ever testified in front of this board before, Mr. Simons?
I have.
Well, wait, I, I know Mr. Simons. He's, he's qualified as a professional engineer. He's qualified to give expert testimony as a professional engineer, and the board accepts him as such. It's fine.
Right, thank you.
So.
So, uh, wanted to step forward and, uh, the, uh.
So with that introduction, I ask each of you to raise your right hand.
Raise your right hand.
And do each of you swear affirm testimony about to give us true and correct to best your knowledge, information, and belief?
Yes.
Yes.
That's two yeses. Thank you. Our professionals have already been sworn, so Mr. Taylor, take it away.
All right, thank you very much. As was indicated, this is a request for a bulk variance to exceed the impervious coverage that is permitted, uh, on this, uh, particular property. Uh, I'm gonna call Ms. Quam. Why don't you come up here?
Okay.
And just provide background information about the property, how long you've owned it, and what the current status is. And we do have some very nice photographs.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, uh, you can add that. Uh, this is, I can, I can slow down. What we did is take it in two phases. The building that exists.
Here, here, turn it on, I got it.
The building that exists, um, to the left, if you want it put over here.
Yep.
This, this is basically the side angle. This is the driveway that's coming in, uh, and then. This, this is basically the side angle, this is the driveway that's coming in, uh, and then, you own that?
Correct.
Building next to it?
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry, I do not own that.
Oh, just the land here?
Just the land.
Yeah, and then the garage will go into the back here, and, uh, I'll just, where's your, uh? I told her to get some good color photos and avoid it cheap.
Well, well, indeed, and bef- uh, thank you, Mr. Taylor.
And we'll walk him if you want.
Indeed, and, and that's what I was gonna say, before we step away from those two color photos, why don't we identify them for the record? And it, it looks like you're presenting them as a composite, almost the two of them together.
Right, we, we couldn't get one big enough.
No, 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 I get it. So do you wanna call that collectively, those two photos, A one?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, and then, um, we'll, we'll enter this, we won't discuss this right this second, but we'll enter this photograph in as A two. This is a, uh, a rough, uh, uh, view, architectural, what we're proposing, it's gonna be a little couple changes, but we'll get testimony on that. And then, this has already been submitted as part of the record, if you wanna, um, mark it up. But basically speaking-
And the plan will be A three.
Okay, good. This, um, uh, light color is the location of, of the current driveway, and there's a parking area back here. And what we're going to do is to, uh, expand this driveway on this side, this side, it's, it's, it's kind of on an angle right now. Uh, and to provide for the tenants that are here, uh, the ability better to access and egress the property. It's gonna be expen- spanning out this way, so it's going to be an equal distance to the side of the building, and there will be a fence, uh, detail, uh, you know, there.
Do you, so-
Yeah.
If you don't mind.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, we had recently added this fence right here that you can see, um, here to kind of keep everyone parking here. And then this to prevent people, um, my next door neighbor, they were coming into here and driving across the lawn. So what we would do is just take down the fence to do the, the parking, and then reinstall it to act the same way it's acting right now. So this is what the fence would look like.
Yeah, and it's gonna be that here. One of the problems is, we wanna make sure that, especially when there's ice during the winter or something, there isn't a problem with sliding into the side of the house where all the electrical and gas lines are and stuff and so on. So it's really, uh, a perp- the main purpose is for the safety of those people there. I wanna also, before I go any further, make sure that, uh, the board understands what we're not doing. We're not doing this to accommodate more tenants, more rooms, more, uh, anything to do. What we're doing is to accommodate those that are already there. And Liz, why don't you talk about the, basically the number of people there? There was a comment on one of the review letters, uh, about the, and we'll, I'll wait till we get to Mr. Costin's review and all that. Why don't you explain that and how they, uh, come in and work and, uh, at this point?
Okay, so, um, it fluctuates, um, from year to year, but, um, in general, I've had twenty two to twenty three students that are living in the one property. They're just one single group, I don't rent out to rooms. Um, and one of the things I had wanted to do ever since building the, the addition was to provide them with a garage. But what I noticed was with my driveway, there's only one lane, and, um, I didn't anticipate the number of visitors and delivery drivers, like Amazon, uh, Grubhub, all the- Things that I don't tech- really use as much as the newer generation. So what was happening is that this was getting clogged up and people were bypassing, so we put up the fence. So my initial plan with the garage was have it to face the existing driveway. But now how I see the usage, there's no way they're going to safely access a garage if there's only one lane. So if we put the garage here but face it forward, my hope is if I'm approved to do the lane, this way they're going to utilize the garage and utilize it safely, um.
So how many rooms do you have there?
I have sixteen rooms.
Okay, so sixteen bedrooms?
Correct, yes.
All right.
Yeah, and typically, um, there'll be several people that share rooms, but not every room will be shared. Um, between the bathrooms, common area, everything that's in the, the property, twenty two to twenty three people have been the comfortable, uh, number. In terms of square footage, technically, we could have more people there, but that's not my int-
You gotta get smaller people.
Yeah, I, and that's not my intention.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, and one other thing I'm gonna, uh, just so that, uh, we wanna put this on the record, in that particular zone on that street, it's no, there's no street parking permitted.
Oh, yes, that, I'm gonna-
So that's another thing, that we've gotta work with what we have to accommodate the people there because we cannot rely on it much anymore.
How far are you gonna move that fence over?
What's that?
So you're gonna move the fence over?
Yes, correct, so, um-
What are we looking at on the picture?
So, uh, on the picture, so this is, the, actually, the, the apron was already double wide.
It is.
So where this apron is, is where that, the extra lane to the driveway will be.
Okay.
So the fence will, will, is just split over a little bit, I'm gonna keep this to prevent anyone from going hopping the curb and doing what they were doing before. But it would just be, um, put over like that, meeting the garage, so that they can't go outside of that parking area perimeter.
Now, the electric pole, I'm assuming, is that what that is, electric?
Yes, and we will have to-
Is that going to be moved, or, okay.
Yes, correct, yep.
And Miss, excuse me, how, how many people are gonna be using the garage?
So it's my intention to have three cars in the garage, um, and if, where's that?
Crossed the line.
Oh, um-
So it's gonna be a two car garage?
So I, I tried to get something that is gonna look similar, so with the garage, 'cause we're only doing a thirty by thirty, which is the maximum we could do without going past. Um, we can get a normal garage door and then one that's, um, extended, so we talked to the architect, 'cause we couldn't get three garage doors within that space. So between this and this, my hope is that three people would be able to utilize the garage, and then there'll be some space in the back for, uh, bikes. And anything else that currently they're storing outside because they don't wanna bring it inside.
Right.
Um, so that should clean up any bikes or any other things that typically would be stored in a garage as well.
And they would be suitable for like a compact or a smaller, uh, car back there.
Yeah. And, and just, again, this is just something I found off the, the, the internet, our, our intention is to have the dormers make it look very similar to the house. We wanna have the siding the same roof color so that it's, it matches. Um, but I wanted to at least give you an idea of what our thought process is with the two doors and having the dormer.
That's, that is not, the dormers are not a second floor, there's no-
No, they're, it's just for staff.
Edgar's decorative.
Yeah, yeah, to make it, kinda make it fit with what the house looks like.
Yeah. And when we, when we talked to Mr. Piripon, we discussed this before, uh, coming in here. Uh, one of the goals we had was to, because it is student housing, is to make it look more residential in nature. And a garage, I think, will do that, you know, still, you're still gonna see a large, I mean, conceivably, that could be considered a large house, or, it was really a large house, but by having the garage at the back. Uh, and the reallocation of the driveway and all that, I think it lends a more residential look as opposed to student housing look to it. And that was one of the things that we had in mind for, uh, uh, for doing this.
How much parking do you have in the back now?
Um, so I'll turn this over, this may be easier to... Right now, this is the parking, and, um, they park five cars in a row here, and then they park some cars parallel right here. Um, the tenants that do rent this property before signing the lease, they're very well aware of what the parking is, what the ordinances are. So they do understand that they can only have a certain amount of cars to the property. Um, I do have an office on four eleven North Main Street, that's a couple blocks down, and I told them if they have visitors, or if a couple of them end up needing a car, that could be used as overflow. So, um, so there certainly isn't a car per tenant, but they know this ahead of time, and this is understood. And one of the things I think, and I hope, is that going forward, more of these college students will not bring their cars to school because it's certainly very walkable with all the delivery services that they have. Um, it really would help if they stopped every, everyone bringing a car, especially with all the traffic in town.
And do they, uh, sometimes partner up, I remem- I remember when I was there?
Yeah.
One driver will partner up with some of the other students and then they'll take a carload up to there because they all seem to get together very well over there.
And the thing-
But, but people love their cars, and we understand that.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that is, at the end of the day, you know, where we're at presently.
Yeah, and I, and I see, I see a mixture between all the different, uh, rental properties I, I have, is you have some people, some people with very nice cars, access to a lot of money, likes the convenience. And I do have other tenants where they don't have their own cars.
Right, right.
And it, it's, it's a mixed bag, and this particular property is in walking distance to not only the school, but downtown where there's plenty of amenities right in walking distance.
Okay, um, Mr. Simon, why don't you kinda go over a little bit of this, and then there's some engineering that Mr. Costin had to ask when we get to his, uh, uh, report. And then I'll, before we get to his report, I'll provide the positive and the negative criteria.
My name's Greg Simons, from Young Associates, an applicants engineer. Uh, the applicants proposing a nine hundred square foot garage at this location here, and a one thousand two hundred and sixty five square foot driveway addition. Which is denoted by the hatched gray area on either side of the existing driveway. The existing driveway is approximately three thousand eight square feet, for a total of four thousand two hundred and seventy three square feet. Uh, the height of the garage is to be less than twenty feet. And that's all we have. If we wanna get into the, um, the engineering review letter, we find-
Yeah, listen, in all fairness, Ms. Quam did a nice job.
Yeah, really good.
Yeah, I mean, just to be honest.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll do that.
Just write it down.
Yeah, um, one of the things also, um, there, there is already landscaping here, and once the garage gets in and the juxtaposition of the fencing and all that stuff. Uh, she's going to take a look at it and enhance with more landscaping. Again, to try to give it that residential feel, because we know Glassboro's a university town, and there are a lot of, uh, student parking places. We want this to, you know, be presentable as type of, uh, uh, residential, uh, use. And she's spent a lot of time and money, as you can see, with that building, I've seen many of the, uh, homes in, in Glassboro where they have rentals and the students come up. Uh, very few of them look like this. She does take care of her properties very, very well, and I think she's a credit to, uh, to the borough. Uh, in terms of, in terms of the positive and the negative criteria, um, I've indicated in my application, I'll just go over that briefly. We meet a number of the positive criteria, which is set forth in the municipal land use law, NJSA forty column fifty five D dash two. The first one would be, uh, to provide safety, uh, to the, uh, students, and we always talked about that because of the moving in and out and maneuvering on the site. This will alleviate a lot of those issues and problems, that's under section two A. It would also provide for more adequate, uh, parking and residential field, which I indicated, uh, which would be, uh, the unique shape and configuration, existing condition of the property will be enhanced by this, that's on subsection one. Uh, and then, uh, also would contribute to the well-being of residents on the property and the immediate neighborhood. Uh, again, because it's in a more, uh, productive way of dealing with it and handling the students and handling that, and dealing with the street traffic that access and egresses to. Um, provides sufficient space and appropriate location, uh, which is subsection G. Uh, again, what we're doing is maximizing the, the space that's available, is in a location that is permitted for student housing and it's been there for quite some, but how mu- how long have you been there for that?
I've rented since two thousand eight.
So, long time, and to my knowledge, never any problems with it whatsoever. Does not conflict with neighboring municipalities because it's certainly nowhere close to municipalities, doesn't conflict with the county as, as a, uh, whole. And, uh, we asked for, uh, to the extent required, a waiver of site plan because the, this, the changes are very limited to the site. It's just they, the driveway where the garage is going to, and the, any construction that is going to be done that's gonna re- uh, require a grading plan, then we'll conform to that as well. And I think Mr. Costin had, had commented on that. Uh, as far as the negative criteria, is not a substantial detriment to the zoning plan, the neighborhood, or the municipal land use law. Uh, to the contrary, I think that what we're doing is taking the situation here, uh, which needs some improvements, and we're improving it. And that goes more to the positive criteria, and there's nothing negative about that. It's not gonna hurt anybody, it's not gonna impede in the neighbors, it's gonna actually upgrade the property and provide for a more safe place for the students. And that's basically it. If you have any questions, we'll, we'll go to your review letters, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Any questions from the board at this time? Mr. Costin.
Okay, thank you. Um, before, I, I'm gonna jump into my letter, I'll just, anything that's been covered in testimony already, I'll just skip over. But I did wanna ask, um, Mrs. Quan a question, uh, she, I mentioned, uh, parking at a nearby office, is, is that available now, do the tenants currently use that at all, do they make use of your offer?
They, they have made use of the offer, yes.
Okay. Um, and jumping into the letter, number three, I guess, similar to last application, any, any lighting on this, on the outside of this garage, floodlights or anything like that, for?
Um, yeah, no floodlights.
Just limited, uh, lighting for security reasons, and will be shielded from neighboring properties, so that won't be a problem.
Oh, yeah, I mean, similar, similar to something like this where they have the lighting right by where the garage doors are. So enough to make it secure for them and nothing, that's all.
So a, a simple entry light?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's it.
Uh, any, uh, elec- so obviously electrical service would be out there.
Electric will be the only thing.
Only, only utility, okay. Uh, bedroom, bedrooms I've heard about, um, we, we also have heard about, I did have a question about how exactly this driveway would allow cars to circulate, so we have heard that. I would just point out, the driveway expansion in front of the, um, garage itself really couldn't be used for parking because it has to be open for, for maneuverability. Um, and maybe just another question for the applicant on, I guess, how do you gonna regulate the tenants' usage, like, is there gonna be dedicated three tenants who can use the, the, the garage spaces? Is there any way to, to, any plan to organize that?
So, so what I would be doing, usually I have a lead tenant, um, or two lead tenants that o- organizes the group together. Um, but as a group, I would be talking to them about, you know, making, making some type of agreement of who's using the garage, how often they're using the garage. And to make it clear that that lane is going to stay, uh, open. Um, I mean, it would, anyone using the garage wouldn't be able to get out if that lane is not open. So those are conversations that I will be having with each one of the tenants. Um, and, uh, we do have, it's a similar conversation we have with a property, um, that we own where there's a detached garage in the back of the house. Um, my husband and I use that detached garage to store some of our stuff, and one of the lanes we need to keep open. So the tenants in that particular property has done a great job with keeping that open, so my husband and I can access it, and they also have parking in the back. So similar to that situation that we have in that property will be very, you know, basically the same as this, where we would hash out, uh, who's using the garage. And making sure they understand that that lane is used for the garage access.
Well, you've operated this, if I may, Mr. Chair, you've o- you, you've owned this since two thousand eight, if I recall.
Correct, yeah.
So why now? Why, what's happened? Now, you did talk about some people darting across the grass and cutting the edge and things like that.
Yeah, so we had-
Is that just, like, recent behavior because something happened?
So we had, um, so we had two two major issues. Um, the um, that that issue of people going through the grass onto the other property has been a little bit more recent. But I, uh, it's my opinion that it's been the newer groups that have been going through because that particular house was purchased by a father for his daughter. Her and her friends lived there, then groups of similar nature were there, so they were very respectful. Whereas now there were a couple of groups that thought it was okay to just go through my property through the grass. So that was kind of.
So that explains the fence. I totally get that.
That's the, that's part of the fence. So that that was one.
Well beyond your control.
Completely unrelated to to the property. So then fast forward to when we did the addition. Um, one of the things when we did the addition, um, and I explained to the tenants is this is your parking. We had the overflow, they all understood that. Um, a couple of the things that I did not anticipate, like I had said before, is um the delivery services, as many as as there was, um, visitors. Because even though some visitors did park in that overflow, some did not. And I'm talking about not overnight visitors, but people that would stop in for a short amount of time and go out. Those people weren't going to the overflow because they didn't want to park and walk on it.
Convenience.
So so once we started realizing that there were patterns that we didn't expect because in other properties, those type of people would park in front of the street and there's no street parking. Now, and I will say, these girls have been very good about not parking in front of that that house the whole entire time. But it did end up being a burden. So when we decided with the the garage, we knew that on top of that problem with people parking in the front there and kind of clogging up everything, that any garage would had have to be faced forward and have a separate lane to be utilized. Because if we had it where we initially thought we might have it when we eventually get there, it's not even going to be used.
Right. No, I I I get it.
Yeah.
That was well explained. Thank you.
Thank you.
When you when you purchased that residence, did it look like that or you made it look like that?
Oh, no.
So so this, when I purchased this in two thousand eight, and I'll put this right here to make it easier to say.
It's a very nice looking home, that's why.
Oh, thank you. So, um, so the original part of the house, you see this this porch here?
Right.
This is the original part. We didn't, we altered it a tiny bit, but um just to make the kitchen bigger.
Nothing major, right.
But um, the the aesthetic of the house, I mean, it was a little worn down. We did, we redid the siding and everything. The aesthetic of the house was wonderful. So when we did the addition, we we kind of played off of that and wanted to not lose too much of what was going on in the different angles. So in two thousand eight is when I bought this, and then in twenty twenty is when we did the addition. We had enough money. We ended up selling off a property and having enough money to do the addition.
Beautiful job.
So, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Yeah, fair enough. Mr. Casablanca, do you have anything else?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch on a few dr- everything else to be drainage related. Uh, grading plan, if if the board does approve, this will be required at the time of building permit as the the overall development is over six hundred square feet.
We agree.
I wanted to touch on um the stormwater management ordinance. The property at this point um has not reached the threshold in the the latest ordinance, which was in two thousand one, has not reached the threshold um of a quarter acre of impervious coverage where basins and so forth would be required. But the new ordinance, or the most recent ordinance, I should say, is cumulative. So the addition in twenty twenty and this addition would all count towards that. So if there's anything future, this could tip into an area, a kind of a development that needs stormwater management basins. Um, just in general, the drainage yard drains towards the back. It is a lot of coverage. Uh, Sickles and Associates does have some experience with this property from the the large addition. So there is some documented drainage in the back. Um, I don't think that's at the point where it's too offensive to anybody, but there is at times, my understanding, a little bit of standing water in the rear yard near the house and and uh to the property to the left. Again, as far as I know, um, no no real problems, but there is there is a drainage. All the water flows to the back door and sits there. Um, so that's something to to keep an eye on as this project moves, you know, if it moves forward.
Yeah, generally it's after we've really gotten a bad rainstorm. But typical rain and so forth and so on, it seems to be uh infiltrated right very quickly and just some sloppy stuff. But that's only for heavy rainstorms.
Yeah, that's consistent with my with my understanding as well.
Yeah, right. And when we put the addition on, there was a stormwater management system that was installed in the front yard as well. You can see it on your plans. So some of that was a treated uh for stormwater management for the addition to try and alleviate some of the off-site runoff. And we uh assume that something like that's going to have to happen again with the garage. Going through the grading plan process and approval.
It will be addressed to the satisfaction of your engineer.
Okay, well, that's great. So they will. So that's something less than what the large ordinance requires, but it's something to to mitigate what what proposal or if the board approves it. So so that that's great. Um, just on the, there is a sewer line that runs through the rear yard. Uh, we would ask that the applicant create an easement for that. There is no, um, none of the properties um have easements around that sewer in this area. And as applicants come forth, you know, we we would request that.
Yeah, let me address that if I may. What I recommend, and I've done these before, instead of a meets and bounds easement, but a blanket easement. So that we would have the ability when you had to get back there, anybody had to get back there. Uh, you may be going one way the first time, the second way. But by giving a blanket easement, we can make sure that uh whatever's available for you to get back, that we can accommodate. Uh, a meets and bounds easement is a one-way.
Yeah, no, I get it. No, that's a good idea.
And maybe be locked up at the time and then.
No, I understand.
And that would that would cover access as well, so.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, meets and bounds, and then it's just a broad blanket easement.
That's fine.
And then the last comment, um, there are two sanitary sewer manhole structures in the rear yard where the drainage or the water sometimes pond. So we would uh uh like to see watertight manhole covers installed out there, which is a product that's just available, 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 sorry, or purchased that could be installed on with manhole structures.
We agree.
To keep the wa- to keep the water out.
We agree to comply.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, Ms. Mrs. Adamson had prepared a letter, um, a couple of points based upon the applicant's testimony. Um, there appears to be um sixteen rooms, uh, pre-ordinance for um conditional use. Three looking at it as a fraternity and sorority house. Uh, there needs to be Wall Street parking on the site at a rate of two per spa- two spaces per bedroom. It's thirty-two spaces. It's a really large number, so I think the board should consider that as a variant. Second co- comment is that they exceed the parking coverage, um, which is maxed out at a thousand. I think that's what actually brought it to this board. Um, they exceed that today, thousand uh square feet based on the nine foot by eighteen foot parking spaces. Uh, you're about, you know, four spaces, four point two five spaces. So the testimony this evening is that they have about five plus some, maybe say three, and they're going to increase that. So you're going to exceed the amount of parking uh that would be proposed on the on the property without having an exact count. But we're still going to be less than that thirty-two number. So those I I see as the two variances that the board should consider if it chooses to um improve the sample.
Yeah, and I will point out that there was an appellate decision back in two thousand eighteen. I believe the ordinance at that time was uh ruled as not applicable. They they throw it out. I don't know if anything subsequent to that, but there used to be a count based on the number of rooms and so forth and so. And and they went all the way to, it was a two thousand eighteen appellate decision that said that the ordinance was invalid as a matter of law. So, but we're going to maximize what we have here and um but I don't know that that number, that ordinance, I don't think you've had any subsequent ordinances adopted because that was deemed to be illegal.
A- as of today, that's the ordinance. It's on the books.
Well, yeah, okay. But uh, so we're going to give you whatever we can, the maximum amount. Uh, but um, it is what it is. But I have to tell you, I've been there several times during the school year and I was amazed at how well the kids got along like calm kids. Because at my age, they're all kids, well, half of you are kids. But uh, I I I will say that the way they get along and they just uh hop in the car at each other and go there, back and forth, who needs a ride? And well behaved and I think she's very li- I I I know Ms. Quam now since the short time that I've known her to represent her in this case. And I I will tell you, if they weren't well behaved, there would be problems. Because she is a, she's a taskmaster and I'm quite sure that you have some landlords that aren't that way, that kind of let things happen to wh- whenever they're going to happen. But she's not that way, you know, uh, you're going to comply with her rules and I think that's good for the town.
Well, I think Exhibit A one uh speaks volumes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I mean, and she's uh, yeah, I I hope all your landlords are are like that. And and she cares about, she cares about the town and she's going to work with everybody and I think it's a good thing. She runs a tight ship.
Yeah.
She does. She really does.
Tried.
That's great. My uh, my son will be going to Rowan U in two or three years and maybe he's going to drive. I live in Mickle Town. I'm not going to pay for rent.
You could drop him off.
You could drop him off.
Yeah.
On your way into the office.
I mean, his last uh classes at the GCIT have had to take because two weeks before school let out, he broke his foot in gym. But now he's got a boot and crutches. So I gotta get up at six thirty in the morning and haul him over there back and pick him up. But he goes to GCIT right next to Rowan College where he also goes. But it is what it is, right? That's what we do as parents and uh part of the process.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions from the board?
Uh, one question. Would the house, uh, with the garage, would there be a side entrance? Would there be any windows in the back? I hadn't heard anything.
Oh, yeah.
I looked around. I did not see any, anything indicating there'd be a side door to the garage or whether there'd be windows in there.
So, yes, so um in terms of windows, I'm not sure how many windows, what we're doing with windows. But um, it's my intention with the garage being here to have a door that leads right on to this pavement area for them to access the back part of the garage, separate from the garage doors.
Right. Cause storage for bicycles will all probably won't fit that back there.
Yeah, my thought process is if they drive, if they ride their bike up here, they have the door to go right into the garage and tuck the bike in. Or if they have to access anything from the garage, it's easy to get to.
Any other questions? All right, let's hear from the public. Do I have a motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Now that we opened the public portion of the meeting, is there anybody out there from the public that would like to speak?
Uh, I just wanted to correct something.
Oh.
No, it's fine.
Well, slow down.
No, I'm I'm a host.
You know, but why don't you have a, well, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Why don't you have a conversation with council and then council come tell us what he wants to do?
Okay.
No, that's just the way, that's the way to do it.
Oh, oh, yeah, just he just wanted to uh make it clear that that this is not a fraternity or sorority house. It's just for tenants that are looking, but it's.
We understand that. Yeah, we understand that.
And and you know in this town, there are some home houses that are used for that.
Mm-hmm.
That is not this. This is just for, you know, bedrooms, apartments and so forth.
Right.
Uh, just like the Rowan U uh doors.
Okay, yeah.
Is there anybody else from the public?
Move if we close the public.
Now, now, now.
Oh, no, no, we have.
Up we go. Ooh, sorry.
Adam Schiffman, uh, Picken Address.
I know.
Twenty-four West High Street. Um, I just want to say, I mean, obviously the house speaks for itself, the way it, the way it looks and and what she, I don't know if anyone remembers the screenplay that was there. To me, what's interesting about it is when I went there for the screenplay back in the early two thousands, that was already parking. And that, and it was way more than what was there. So when Liz, for some reason, purchased the property, it was almost taken away from her, even though it was there from the per, you know, the people beforehand and not this administration. So, I mean, it's, to me, it's only fair that sh- that they get back what was there. Because if you look at aerial photos from the early, like late nineties, early two thousands, what's on the right there plus more is like all should be paved already, so it would only make sense. But it would only add value to Glassboro, you know, those neighboring houses. And they're willing to pay the taxes on it, so why not? That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
No.
Do I have a motion to close the public?
Move to close the public session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Close, so be it. What is the pleasure of the board?
I would move that we approve the variances needed for this project. Um, and the things that we talked about tonight.
Right, so, right, fundamentally, motion to approve a bulk variance relief as requested, as spread on the record, in addition to all those things that were agreed upon. For example, just an example, Mr. Taylor talked about a blanket easement for that sewer main.
Right.
We talked about the need for grading plans, right, need ordinance, some of those things.
All of it.
So that's where we're at.
Okay.
So for your consideration, Mr. Chair members.
I have a motion. Anybody want a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Harvey.
Four.
Mr. Perner.
Four.
Mr. Santor.
In favor.
Mr. Smith.
Four.
Ms. Camiola?
Four.
And Mr. Moon.
In favor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's a nicer result than I got the last time.
Trying to mix it up for you.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, please don't mix it up too much.
Could you try to get the house across the street to keep their people from parking with their two rear tires on Main Street?
Which which one?
There are several houses across the street from yours, not on your side of the road. But I'll drive by going, heading home and I'm like, you know, I can't understand how somebody like a tr- a bus hasn't backed sides.
Yeah.
Because two whole wheels in the rear end of the car are parked on Main Street.
Yeah.
And blocking the whole sidewalk. I mean, it's just, I was glad to see you didn't have anything that would lead to them.
No, no.
But the good point is she does have her office just a couple blocks down, so she's really able to watch this property uh very closely.
Yeah, right, yeah. I, when, and when um, when a couple of the tenants had said, oh, it's too far, I've, I personally walked it and timed myself. And in front of them, I said it, it took me six minutes at a casual pace to to walk it.
Right.
And then, and then there was no more objections. So they were, they were very good with um doing any overflow at my office to keep it off the street. Because like you said, I mean, that's not safe and that's why they don't have parking on the street.
I mean, it's really, especially, you know, we're so, there are times of the day, today I was going down High Street.
Yeah.
And there was something parked with a big, something attached to it on the no parking zone.
Yeah, yeah.
They took up part of the lane I was in.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, there was a tractor trailer and a bus in the other lane. So I was sort of like, uh-oh.
Yeah, yeah, what do you do?
Jam on the brakes and see, you know, I mean, it's like, if I had already been going around and they didn't see me.
Yeah.
It could have been, it could have been really bad.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they do have some speeding then, make sure that I've been there several times.
No.
Not just, not just make sure.
No.
It is what it is, but uh. I guess the parents, when you rented them and parents come and see, they're probably very happy that they're not being at home like that.
I've actually gotten a a bunch of really good feedback. Um, one of the uh most recent tenants, her dad's a contractor, and that was a a really good um compliment from someone who was in the trades when he walked through and and took a look at what we did. So, so it's, you know, I.
Speaks for itself.
I I appreciate that.
Even your lawyer looks good. Let me look at this.
He's pulling his weight with the, the, having this nazi dress because I forgot my shoes. I, yeah, I have my.
Oh, my goodness. I know. I know.
I actually wore the wrong shoes. I was a little late.
I I can't wait to see what the ribbon coating.
I have to get paid to do that. We'll uh, we'll uh get on it right away. I'll I'll get a legal description uh of the property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I'll do, we'll take a look at it and then we'll just amend them. You want a separate easement that you can record, right? You want just a separate blanket easement?
Yes.
Okay, not put on the, the, no, okay, I'll get that done.
You got it, all right.
Okay, thank you. I thank you all very much.
Take care, stay well.
All right, we have no reports. Workshop committee.
Uh, we didn't make this week because they canceled it.
Great.
No, 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 for her.
Sorry, Mr. Al, do you have a report for us?
Um, no, um, nothing to report. Uh, good to see everyone, of course. Uh, no resolutions. Uh, back to you, Mr. Trump.
I mean, this doesn't have a resolution.
There's a resolution.
Is there?
Yeah.
And which one's that?
R twenty-two G zero eight.
Is that um?
That one.
Chosen restoration.
Chosen restoration, exactly. Just testing you, Mr. Chairman.
Not a problem.
Got an A, very nicely done. And for your consideration, chosen restoration, you'll remember this was um, uh, the bulk variance that we had and and the use in bulk uh at the last meeting.
Right. You need a roll call of those. Yep. Yep. Motion to approve. Thank you, Ms. Camiola.
I'll move that we approve the resolution.
Uh, second. All right, roll call.
Mr. Harvey? Mr. Perner?
Four.
Mr. Santor?
Four.
Mr. Smith?
Four.
Ms. Camiola?
Four.
And Mr. Moon?
Four.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just, that was just a reminder about, of course, the property that had been damaged and could have been rebuilt. But then there was a significant event which made them have to come here and it was, you know, yeah, good.
All right, we have any old business? Any new business? Anybody from the public?
Nope.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a first and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? So be it. All right, our next meeting is going to be July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. Um, hopefully everybody can make it. It's going to be an important one.
Yeah, that's, yes, that would be good.
If you can't make it, please let Terry know well in advance because we're going to need a full board for that.
So we will be here in, uh, the restore, the one that's postponed. And we also have another appeal that came in, uh, for Burger King where they want to do, I think, a site plan amendment along.
They want to do two, two lengths.
The two lanes, yes.
Right.
Yes, yes. So that will also be heard that night. So we have two appeals.
Twenty, twenty-first?
Yes.
Uh, yep, July twenty-one.
You got a photo exhibit, she, she lived around here.
Thank you.
I know, I know. I know, I hear you.
We, we say we adjourned, do we make, right, we're done?
You know, it's, 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 it's a fact of the matter.